Ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember DeBoer is absent tonight. Councilmember Hages.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Tealander.
Here.
And Mayor Althaus.
Here.
And I make the motion to excuse the absence of Councilmember DeBoer.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Approval of the agenda.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda. I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? Approval of the council payable?
I'll make the motion to approve the council payable.
You need to have approval on the minutes first.
Oh, missing it.
Can I make that motion to approve the minutes of the August 1st meeting?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Yes.
There we go. Looking at the wrong paper, sorry about that. Approval of the council payable.
I'll remake that motion. I'll second that.
Roll call, vote please.
Mayor Althaus.
Yes.
Councilmember DeBoer is absent. Councilmember Hages.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander.
Yes.
And citizens, discussion variety was not on the agenda.
Good evening, Jim Salzweiler, 505 North Jefferson. I just want to take a moment to thank Dave Bestwell in the last, what, eight and a half?
Seven months.
Seven months that he's been here spearheading the city through some times and times. And I'm quite sure you guys are all going to be making a comment as this will, I believe, will be Dave's last meeting. So, great job, Dave, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Angie Dreyer from Senior Neighbors RSVP. RSVP is Retired and Senior Volunteer Program. It has nationally been around for 45 years and the Kent County area for 43. As many of you know, Mark Rosenberg retired from retirement volunteering almost 20 years with the police force. And we now have Don Smyter left as a VIP. And my goal here tonight is to expose RSVP to as many of you as possible. Not just for RSVPs, but also for other areas that we support the local community with, such as tutoring and mentoring kindergarten through third grade, working with Aging in Place for the elderly, providing meals to their homes, working with local food banks, making sure food is getting to them adequately and supporting them living in home as they age, but providing friendly visiting transportation and those sorts of things. And then our community priorities, which is working with the local police departments and also expanding upon the cultures of the arts and helping citizens become U.S. legal citizens by swearing in at the Ford Museum and that sort of thing. I will be here tonight till the afterward to hand out some brochures. If you have questions, maybe it's not for you. You just need to be 55 years and older. But if it's not for you, perhaps a neighbor, friend, family, spouse, somebody is interested. So, I'll be here and thank you very much for your time.
Good evening. My name is Greg Northup. I'm with Lowell Energy AD. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight to update you as to the status of the odor issues that we've been dealing with. I'll tell you straight away that it's unacceptable in terms of the fact that we're still having these issues. So, I'm here tonight to let you know what else it is that we're doing in our pursuit to eliminate this problem. I pass out to the council. I think Steve Dunderslot sent this information out to others that are interested in this issue. Last time I was here, we took a series of actions that we thought would tackle the odor issues at the sources. And we've actually done those things. But we continued then to experience an ongoing odor issue. And at that point, we started again questioning ourselves in terms of what was causing the problem. And so, in the document that I distributed tonight, there's a photo in the back that shows a large, one of the large tanks. There's three tanks that we put materials in. This one's called the Reflow Tank. And in this particular case, there's two arrows that point to a couple vents that are there for the purpose of maintaining air separation between two separate membranes. There's an inner membrane that's there for the purpose of retaining methane gas and should retain the odors that are being created inside the tank. There's a second membrane there that's called a weather membrane just to protect it from ice, snow, and rain and those kinds of things. In between the two membranes, there's a blower that sucks in air that causes a space of about one to two inches. And that's there for purposes of safety. It's there for purposes of making sure that we maintain the integrity of the system. And when we started looking at it, we actually went off and took a bucket truck with our help from our friends at Lowell Light and Power. And we actually smelled odor coming from these two vents. And that's the source that we're now dealing with because we think it's the source of the lingering odor issues. I had it tested on Friday, a specific test that's required by the manufacturer to determine the parts per million of methane. The threshold that they had was 500 parts per million. We tested at 600 to 700 parts per million or exceeding threshold. As a result of that, they will be sending a technician over so that we can actually take the tank apart in terms of the membrane process, identify what the source of the leak is. And it's likely there's a leak on the inner liner at this point that they are confident that they can repair. But you need to do this with a technician that's skilled in this type of work. And because we're dealing with methane, combustible material, we need to make sure we do it with all safety precaution. We don't need to cut a bigger problem than the odor problem we have right now. So, I was hoping to hear from them specifically as to when they were going to schedule the technician. But today is a national holiday in Germany, which I didn't realize. And when I talked to them last week, they didn't mention that to me. So, I hope tomorrow to have the specific information from them. Secondly, we're going to proceed with building an enclosure over the top of the wastewater treatment plant. We had talked about at one time building a wall. After we ended up hiring Progressive A&amp;E, which is a grand aerospace, architecture, and engineering firm, it became pretty clear after talking to the manufacturers of the materials that made the enclosures that it was more prudent and more appropriate to actually build an enclosure than to build a wall. And in doing this, you've got to have the detailed specifications to get the building permit approved by Casket Township, which is your permitting entity, and so it requires electronic detailed design. I'm waiting for that design to be submitted to us by the manufacturer of the materials that we're using. Good news for them, and they're in a business that's very popular. Bad news for us is trying to get on their radar screen. But they've assured us that they'll have a quote to us shortly. I'm confident about that in the sense that they've done these kinds of enclosures for other wastewater treatment systems. So, it's a common practice that's been used by others, and they've done this work before. So, I'm just waiting for the quote from them, the quote we get to detail, that we can then submit a building permit. We've been assured by the city that they'll help us work through building permit process so that we can obviously follow that piece of requirement. But I think it's going to be a better long-term solution for us. I'm pretty convinced that the interim actions we took with regard to the wastewater treatment system of using these foggers or neutralizers, they're actually doing their job. That is the odor coming off the top of the tank that's still causing us a serious problem. So, we've also, we're pretty convinced that all of the odors inside of the building have been addressed. So, right now, we're just dealing with this last external problem as it relates to odor issue. And I apologize to the community. I know that doesn't do much for the people that are having to deal with it. But it's definitely on our radar screen. We definitely plan to fix it. We just need to do it in a way that makes good sense against safety practices and requirements that the manufacturer has for how we do this work. To do otherwise would not be approved. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
And just for clarification, Greg, when you refer to wastewater, you're referring to what's happened at Chatham, not Bow's Row?
No, no, it's our pre-treatment system. We take wastewater from Lighthouse that we treat. We pull the solids out of their wastewater that we use as part of our system. And we also create some water ourselves. And so, we treat that water before we actually send it to the wastewater treatment system.
I appreciate what you're doing, very much.
I'm just sorry that we can't get it done faster. But we are trying to be smart about what we're doing and doing in a way that makes good safety sense ultimately.
Thank you.
Perry Beecham resides at 924 Riverside Drive. I'm here tonight to encourage the council on behalf of LAURA, which is Lowell Area Recreation Authority, which is the promoters, the group that is working to get trails throughout the community. And I would like, the city, I think, needs to look at their ordinances and probably needs a little bit more description, whether with snow removal, is the trail then in lieu of sidewalks? Again, because it says sidewalks need to be cleared of snow within 24 hours by the resident. Does that mean, because we talked about before at, and I see it's up here on the DDA. If we use federal money, our trail has to be 10-foot. If you're doing it all with private money, then you can have it two-foot, three-foot, five-foot, whatever the case may be. But if you use federal money, it has to be 10-foot. And the bridges, one of their requirements is 10-foot width. They actually become 14-foot wide because you have to have a two-foot buffer on each side of that 10 feet. So, anyway, you know, I think the city needs to look at their sidewalk, their snow removal policy. If that trail's there, does that mean that, because we've had some questions from residents, does that mean I have to plow all 10 feet of it? Can I plow just five feet of it? What are the case? And another example is, I know it hasn't been enforced, but I just think in general, because it does state in adjacent property that doesn't have a sidewalk, you're supposed to clear a path within 24 hours. And I'm going to cite, you know, and I'm just using this as examples. For instance, the city, if you go up Jackson, there's a, it's only, there's a cut in the, on Front Street. There's a cut with four-foot of sidewalk. So, does that mean the city needs to plow a pathway from there all the way up to the bridge? I mean, there's all these little questions that I think the council needs to look at the ordinance and look at what other communities are doing with trails slash sidewalks. Because trails, you're going to see more and more trails throughout the community. And so, I just would encourage the council to look at that and devise and see if that ordinance needs to be revisited with those types of details. Thanks.
Thank you, Perry.
Hello, my name's Chad Rosenzweig. I reside at 504 Amity. I'm here in regards of the smell, the odor from the biodigester. I'm aware that this company is doing their best to make the odor go away. But for the time being, I'm wondering if the city has any plans in case their situation or they don't solve the problem. So, do you guys have any plans for this doesn't work because what they're doing is not working so far?
Yeah, actually, I've been in contact with the city attorney. And we've talked with Light and Power. We are pursuing it to address it. It does have to end.
Yeah, well, we dealt with it all last summer, and then we're dealt with the enclosures this summer as well. And we've, I personally have made six or seven complaints. Plus, I wrote all of you a letter today. Never got a response from a single one of you. But just curious, what your plan is? I mean, is there, if this doesn't get solved, or I mean, what is their plan?
I think if I might, the biodigester and everything under its roof is owned and operated by Lowell Energy, not by the city Lowell, not by Light and Power. We do have the authority to enforce and back up our various ordinances that pertain to nuisances. The operation and the ownership is on Lowell Energy and their operations. So, we do have the authority to back that up with ordinance violations. And, but the ownership and responsibility and the operations are solely that of Lowell Energy.
Okay, and I'm aware that the city has been giving them ordinance violations. And I'm aware, I guess it's only $300 a day. Is that, is that the cap? I mean, can we raise it to kind of encourage on the move even faster? Because I've actually lost sleep because of this, because of the smell getting sucked into the house. So, and it's just, I mean, it's a daily occurrence. So, I can't even sit in my backyard. So, I'm just a little frustrated. So, just curious, that's how we're going to do it?
Is there a threshold identified in the ordinances, how much you can put up with as a citizen, as a community?
No, I don't believe that there's anything that's identified specifically.
Say like a date for a cease and desist or something, like a set date in case they don't meet their goals?
That could happen. But I don't believe that we plan making that happen. What we would hope is that we can get this fixed. They are doing due diligence in addressing the issues. It is frustrating on all of our hearts, including Mr. Northup. But we're working towards having a solution.
Okay, just thank you.
Hi, guys. Same situation. 101 Hepburn Street set out in front of my house. And I thought I was going to throw up.
Sir, would you please state your name?
Joe Runstrum.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. And my concern is there's a school over there. On the other, I live by Laurel's Kent. There's a school that's on the other side of the field. What's the intention before the kids start going to school? If that smell's going on when they're young and through the school, someone's going to get sick. What is, I mean, you're sure, I'm sure you're aware that starting date's coming up. What, are we concerned about that issue with the kids? Is there any way to stop this, to shut it down before that school starts, to stop this smell? If they don't run that thing, it's not going to smell, is it?
Yes, it won't. That's the problem. You just can't turn the switch and shut it down.
Can't you shut it down?
There's sewage coming from Lighthouse into a tank there. It's not just as easy as flicking a switch. The problem is, and I'll apologize, I live right across the street from it. And I agree with you 100%. It's just outrageous. We were fielding calls, but we weren't fielding calls. There was complaints being called into the police department, and they were just forwarding them or having the people call DPW or Light and Power. Nobody was really doing anything up until about two months ago. Now, everything has changed. If you call the police department, they'll come and they'll, they'll take a complaint, and they will, they will write them a citation. But before this, and this is why it's all built up so bad, I never thought about the wind blowing the other way when it wasn't snowing at my house. I didn't think about it. But actually, and no one actually came to the council meeting in just like the last two months. So, you know, it's.
It's been the last week for us.
Oh, yeah, it's just been terrible.
We did file, and I guess it makes me nauseous and stuff. And I am concerned about the kids sitting in school and not to smell this. And I know that school over there by across the field from Laurel's Kent is going to get it.
My granddaughter goes there, and so I think Allen's does.
My five-year-old granddaughter goes there.
So, we are concerned about it. And we are, we're going to make sure it gets addressed if we have to get someone bigger than us.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yeah, Joe, we care. We really care.
Oh, I know, I can tell. But we've got kids, you know, they're more important than that.
Old business?
Nothing new?
New business?
Mayor Althaus, at this time, I received a request from Councilmember DeBoer, who has requested that this item be removed from the agenda, but hopes of adding it on later.
That's the stony life?
Yes.
Item B, Resolution 1516.
That's a resolution designating September 16, 2016, as Prisoner of War Missing in Action Recognition Day.
I'm going to add support a motion.
I'll make a motion that the city council adopt Resolution 15-16 proclaiming Friday, September 16, 2016, as Prisoner of War Missing in Action Recognition Day.
I'll second that.
Second that. Now, do I read the motion now? Should I read this?
You could.
Do you want to read it? I'd love to hear you read it.
I'd be happy to read the resolution. The council has voted, well, made a motion to and second. And that is whereby, whereas the United States has fought many wars, one of the longest was the Vietnamese conflict. And whereas Friday, September 16, 2016, is a day of remembrance for those who suffered as prisoners of war or are still missing as a result of any conflict. And whereas although cooperation has increased within the past few years, there are still nearly 1,700 American servicemen, women, and civilians, including 49th in the state of Michigan, missing and unaccounted for in Indochina. The uncertainty surrounding their fates has caused their families to suffer great hardship. And whereas increased public awareness and focusing public attention on this issue is one way to help achieve this goal. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city Lowell that Friday, September 16, 2016, shall be designated Prisoner of War Missing in Action Recognition Day. And finally, we urge all of our citizens to take note of this important issue and remember those servicemen and women and civilians who were prisoners of war and those that are still missing to commemorate that day with appropriate activities. Be so adept.
Roll call, vote please.
Councilmember DeBoer is absent. Councilmember Hages.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander.
Yes.
And Mayor Althaus.
Yes. And I'd also like to remind everybody that they do, would like us, would have liked us to participate, but we aren't going to, most of us are going to be out of town that week. So, if there's anyone else from the city that might want to go and represent the city, then, hey, you're welcome to. Thank you.
Resolution 1616.
Which is proclaiming Friday, September 16, 2016, as Pink Arrow Pride Day. And Arrow Force 8.
It's nine, actually.
Nine, nine?
Should be one, one more times.
Is that right, Teresa? She knows.
One less than ten.
One, nine. We got it. Right.
Do I have a motion?
I make the motion that the city council adopt Resolution 1616, proclaiming Friday, September 16, as Pink Arrow Pride Day, Arrow Force 9 in the city Lowell.
I'll second that.
And I'm going to read this one. I think I can handle this one. Whereas many have been affected and battling cancer and breast cancer in particular. And whereas the Lowell high school football team, girls outdoor volleyball team, boys soccer team will once again compete against this disease with each player wearing pink for games on Friday, September 16, 2016. And whereas the Lowell community is encouraged to buy and wear Pink Arrow Force 9, right? T-shirts to support Gildas Club of Lowell, Lowell Community Wellness for Pink Arrow. For Pink Arrow's family support, the Dr. Girard Medical Scholarship and Kathy Tallis Scholarship. Now, therefore, be resolved that Lowell City Council recognize Friday, September 16, 2016, as Pink Arrow Pride Day, Arrow Force 9. And further, to encourage all Lowell community residents to participate in this event by purchasing pink t-shirts and attending the game. Roll call, vote please.
Councilmember Hages.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander.
Yes.
Mayor Althaus.
Yes.
And Councilmember DeBoer is absent.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might, I think that in the past, we've worn our pink t-shirts on the council member, on the council meeting before the game, which will be at our next meeting, September 36. So, I would encourage council members to do so.
And Mr. Hages?
Yes.
Those can be purchased this Thursday at Community Day on the River Walk.
Thank you. Community Day at River Walk.
And we need your blood.
Pink and red.
Item D, Larkin's Restaurant Chili Cookoff Special Event Permit.
I think Mike Larkin is here. For the 14th time, this is our 15th chili cook-off. One was in the parking lot, or the patio area, the rest have been on Broadway Street. Some requests from the council that we can close the street on October 8 from 7:00 to 7:00. Gives us time to set up and clean up. This year, we're raising money for the Arts Council, our new neighbor, and their endeavors to fix their building up. In 15 years we've had this chili cook-off, the only problems we've ever had is parking. That's the only complaints I think the city, I believe, is parking. I think we're looking at from south of the post office to Main Street? Yes. Unless we can get the post office down. And more clothes on it. Any questions?
It's a wonderful event, great flavors of chili, and great friendship. The community seems to all come out for that.
And it is part of the harvest festival that we're handling. It's really incredible.
Looking for motion, I would propose that, recommend that the Lowell City Council approve the special event permit for Larkin's Restaurant to close Broadway Street from south of the post office to Main Street on October 8, 2016, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
I'll second.
Roll call, vote please.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander.
Yes.
Mayor Althaus.
Yes.
Councilmember DeBoer is absent. And Councilmember Hages.
Yes.
Item E, DDA funding, this sort of got rolled out a little bit different than I wanted it to. I just wanted to talk about it because back at the first of the year, or after the first of the year, I was sick for a meeting and I wanted to, for the council, as a council, I wanted to recommend that we donate $10,000 for this project. And I, and it just got forgotten. I, and it just got, gotten, got forgotten, and I still think with this whole project being, we're putting inside, it's not just a trail, it's more sidewalks for the city, and it's a DDA, let's go along with the project, which I think they are, I would like this, the city to put ten thousand dollars in, in on that project, as Lake Porridge Township and Lowell Township did too. So, I would like to make a motion that we, we put ten thousand dollars towards that project.
Regardless of what the DDA?
Regardless of what the DDA does, yes. Up, up on top of it. Yes.
That fits in the budget? Okay. I'd have to refer this to Sue.
Make it work.
We'll make it work.
Yeah. I think we talked about it before, and I thought it was supposed to have been, it should have worked, so.
Well, that's okay, it's the first that we've heard about the ten thousand dollar allocation, but I mean, as long as Sue feels comfortable with it, then obviously, I'm supporting it.
And I believe it would be legal, and it would be all right, since it's, we're dealing with a public area.
Since you're doing with, the use of funds for public purposes, it's gonna be a public trail, I guess. So, obviously, it's legal.
Based on that, I would make that as a motion that we contribute ten thousand dollars towards this project, and encourage the DDA to support it also.
I'll second. Vote, vote please.
Councilmember Tealander?
Yes.
Mayor Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember DeBoer is absent, Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item M. Are you?
Here you are designating a voting delegate toward the Michigan Municipally Convention, which will be held at Magna Island. The dates are, you know, Susie?
September fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth.
So usually, the council does designate a person to represent the city.
This will be for the annual meeting at one thirty on Wednesday, September the fourteenth.
There you go. Correct.
And in the past, might I say that we've designated the mayor as the duff delegate, and the mayor pro temp as the alternate, and I believe both will be in attendance, and so I would make that suggestion that we have the mayor, the delegate, and the mayor pro temp as our alternate.
I'll second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
Resolution seventeen sixteen.
Yes. Over the past number of months, we've had city staff and engineering look at some significant improvements to our wastewater and water system. We have Brian Vilmont from Cryon New Hope that has spent much time regarding this project, and he will go over the basics on it, and our city attorney, Bon Council, at Blent, will provide information regarding the financing, so, Brian, go ahead.
Sue, Sue, can you scroll down? Thank you.
Thank you again. Brian Vilmont of Cryon New Hope, again, we appreciate the opportunity to work with the city on these issues. As you know, infrastructure is really important, provides core services to all our businesses and citizens, it's really important that we do what we can to make sure we maximize the investment of those dollars. And in previous council meetings, we've already reviewed the main lift station replacement and the trunk sewer replacement, and I guess if you're okay, I'll briefly note for the benefit of the public that are here, all the sewage in the city really comes from three main districts, we talked about the west district, also then the central district, which is still west of the river, but north of Main Street, and then the east district here on this side of the river. All that sewage goes down to the main lift station, just south on Water Street to south of Main King Milling Building. From there, it gets pumped about fifteen hundred feet south to the wastewater plant. Part of the reason that lift station is there is because it used to be that that's where the confluence of all the sewage came together. Matter of fact, now, and I guess this is for council's benefit also, at that main lift station, you really have a pipe coming from each district, there's a westerly pipe coming along Ottawa, a northerly pipe that comes down Broadway, and then an easterly pipe that comes across the rivers, the river crossing. So it's all joined at the pump station. And that pump station was pretty old, was needing some major work to it, potentially a rebuild, and in looking at how do we, how do we best invest the citizens' money, we looked at, do we rebuild that, or do we put a new lift station down at the plant? And the idea was, in the long run, there's more of return on investment by putting a new station down at the plant. So that, that is already in the works, and council's already going to move forward with that. Along with that is a trunk sewer that would carry that sewage from where the current station is, connect to all those lines, and run that down to the treatment plant directly. There's a lot of benefits with that, we've already been over those benefits, but again, the idea is that in the long run, it's a better investment for the, for the money. In looking at how we want to do that logistically, we started looking at how all the sewers come in, and as an engineering firm, again, we're trying to look down the road as far as we can, and one of the things to note is that the sewer coming in from the north end along Broadway is a pre nineteen thirty-five sewer, and it crosses underneath the railroad tracks there at King Milling. And at some point in time, we knew we were gonna have to replace that. Matter of fact, you know, one of the things that's changed a little bit since we originally started looking at the lift station is that King Milling has acquired the old Michigan Wire property, and they're looking at doing some, tearing down the old Michigan Wire building and expanding their operations down there. So it changes the way we look at things a little bit. And what that meant was, at some point, we're gonna need to replace that old sewer line underneath the railroad tracks. That particular location on Water Street is very congested, there's very little space, there's the existing, major existing utilities, big storm sewer, of course, the existing sanitary sewer there, the King Milling buildings, it makes it very problematic to try to get a new, what we call a bore and jack underneath the railroad, where we have to jack a steel casing underneath and slide the sewer through. And you can't just simply stop the existing sewer while it's happening, you have to keep all that flowing. So that means pumping up and over the railroad tracks, it just is a really involved process. In looking around at what our alternatives were, we recognized that there's a potential for putting that sewer instead, locating it over at Broadway Street, and picking that sewer up just as it crosses Main Street, continuing down Broadway a little ways, and then cutting over and tying into the trunk sewer. Really, it affords us a lot more room to work with, it's a little bit longer of a bore and jack, but we still have plenty of room there, which is great, we can build that without disrupting the existing sewer, and what starts to tip the scales a little bit even more is that there's an existing four-inch water line in Broadway Street that also is in need of replacement, it's undersized and is old. And so our thought was, if we can do that water main and the sanitary sewer at the same time, we get another big bang for our buck in that bore and jack operation, which is a lot to mobilize that equipment and set it all up. So again, it's that, it starts to build on itself as far as the advantages of doing these things all at the same time. We keep, I can't say that the broader, the existing Water Street sewer's gonna fail tomorrow, you know, it's like your plumbing, you never know the day it's gonna fail, but we know it's pre nineteen thirty-five, so it's coming. So it's just a matter of when do we wanna act on it. And looking at this different route and the space that affords us, this might make sense to do this now, that's really what we're recommending. So we're looking at, okay, putting a new sewer down Broadway Street and allowing what's underneath King Milling now to become private. The other advantage that we have with this Broadway sewer route, it's shown in the handouts that I gave you, and I apologize if the public doesn't have this up to see, but currently, the sewer that comes from the north comes south down Broadway, turns the corner behind the Main Street buildings and snakes through the King Milling compound, I'll call it. And then remember, there was a sewer from the west that also comes down Ottawa. If we reroute the sewer and we use Broadway as the new sewer route, not only do we, can we abandon the piece from a public perspective that's underneath the King Milling compound, we can also pick up the sewer that comes down Ottawa Street and intercept that, because that sewer, once it crosses Broadway, it crosses across the old Michigan Wire property and across by the ball field. Again, if we can intercept that and route it around, we're able to get rid of some more public infrastructure underneath private property, which is good, and from a public perspective, that also then frees up more of that Michigan Wire property without having a public utility underneath the middle of it. So it's beneficial to King Milling as well. So all those things start pointing in the direction that routing the sewer and redoing the water main down Broadway makes some sense. The other thing it facilitates is, by doing that water main, we're looking at going from a four-inch to maybe a twelve-inch water main, and that does a couple things for the city. One is it provides some extra capacity, especially on the south side of the track, so it facilitates King Milling, if they can expand there, if they have to sprinkle a building for fire protection, it facilitates that, plus water use. The other thing it does is by continuing that loop down Broadway to Bowes, and then down Bowes Road a little ways, there's a sixteen-inch water main connection. So the whole water system, again, it's shown on your map, goes from the treatment plant with a sixteen-inch main down Bowes, and then before it gets to Broadway, it cuts north and cuts under the tracks to Main Street here. That is a twelve-inch line that supplies the majority of the water for the east side of the city. It's one single connection between that sixteen-inch main and the line in Main Street. And we think that adding a second twelve-inch connection down Bowes and back up Broadway to Main Street is a really good redundant factor for the water main, provides some extra security for transmission capacity underneath the railroad, it would be the second large water main under the railroad to provide for that, that safety and that redundancy. So, all those things come together and point towards that, you know, these, just adding these pieces to the infrastructure plan is a good thing, the really thing, it really comes down to timing. And I think that's where we had some discussion with Dave and with Rich, and looking at, okay, what makes sense, and it's still money, it means a lot, it still is expensive to do, but I think the idea is that we're not doing these things that we wouldn't do otherwise, it's simply deciding when do we want to do them. And that's really the part of asset management plan and infrastructure planning that you do, is you look at, when can you maximize your dollar, when can you get the best bang for your buck? And as Dick will talk about in a moment, combining those projects into one financing package is very helpful. I think the idea would be that if, it's the council's pleasure to move forward with those infrastructure investments, the projects would still be bid separately, we have different contractors, may be timed a little bit, you know, within the next year or two years, but the financing package could all happen at once, and again, save a lot of money in that respect. I guess I'll open that up for any questions you have on the physical piece, and let Dick comment on the.
Brian, did you mention the lift station at Valley Vista?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, that was also part of the other improvements that the council previously had looked at, was the Valley Vista Lift Station, which is also another major lift station kind of on the west side, that is in need of repair and replacement. We looked at options there, and the idea was there's city-owned property on the north side of the street, currently, the lift station's on the south side, it's about thirty feet from the condominium's door. And if we were lucky, when Jen and I were out there, we spoke with the woman that lived there, she was very nice about it, but she was very excited about the possibility of that moving to the other side of the street. And that's the, it's the right place for it to be, is on the other side of the street, gives us the city more room to work with that thing, and it's, it minimizes the cost of having to deal with that in there.
Brian, Brian, did you also mention the getting the water main across Main Street?
Yeah, we will, as part of that, and this will be a little bit of a, not so much fun-to-build piece, but that four-inch water main that's in Broadway does go all the way across to the north side of Main Street, where it connects into the existing twelve-inch line, and so we will have to have some kind of a, either a bore or a cut across Main Street to make that connection. But, once it's done, then hopefully, we won't have to do it again for seventy years, which would be good. But that's also a part of that. So again, looking long-term, again, not trying to just dogpile projects, but pick projects that make sense, and we just have to do them for time to maximize our return on investment on those things.
I've been aware of this for a couple of years, and I'm very impressed with the planning, the thought that has gone into this, as well as, that living near Union Street's awfully well.
Jim, I have a question.
Can you answer it all?
May I ask a question? Sure. I know you guys are looking at the main infrastructure, you always get started with that, but how does the rest of the infrastructure look when it branches out to my home or all the other residents? What are we looking at the long term for that? We said nineteen thirty-five, I don't know that part of it, so what happens after that infrastructure? And what's the next, is it a ten-year plan, fifteen-year plan? What's it really look like?
I actually did pay you to ask that question, which is really good, because it segues, it's a good piece of information. And actually, there's a, currently, there's a program through Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, it's called a SAW grant, and it's really intended to help cities assess their infrastructure. So what that SAW grant will pay for, which actually kicks in this fall, the city gets, hopefully gets their award in October, November this year, which pays for an inventory and condition assessment on the entire storm system and sanitary system. So we'll be able, in essence, to put eyes on every single piece of pipe, and actually, you may have seen some of our crews, the Cryon New Hope crews around, we've been working a little bit ahead in anticipation of the grant coming, so that'll let us get a little go ahead on the condition assessment. And the idea then is from that, we can then look at what the physical condition of everything is, and then what its criticality is, meaning looking at, is it under a major street, is it Main Street, or is it under a side street? Where is it at? How much of the population does it serve? In essence, a way to prioritize which things need to be fixed first, based on great information of physical condition and location. That will also get rolled into a water asset management plan, which kind of does the same thing, it's an inventory and a condition assessment, and then we look and lump roads into that same thing. And in essence, that whole program then, will look at all the infrastructure that shares right away, and work at setting up both projects and timing of those things to maximize the return on investment. And that plan looks out, we call it an asset management plan, that looks at the life cycle for all the utilities. So that will look out from today to seventy years from now. That's an asset management plan, and the idea is so that you have this heads-up, so that there aren't any real major rises, and the idea is to try to, one, stabilize the investments you make in the utilities, and stabilize the rates that are used to support them. The other thing that'll do is generate a five to ten-year capital improvement plan for very specific projects, so as those projects way out in the future flow towards you in time, you then suck them into the capital improvement plans, start planning very specific activities in very specific years, and then that's what council can budget for. So hopefully, that, that's kind of a big picture view, and that's what's to come for this fall.
And this will also help a little bit with water infiltration that we have?
Yes.
That we've been working on for years.
Yeah, unfortunately, the SAW grant won't pay for any physical improvements, but what it will do is pay for figuring out where the problem is, and how to, how to fix it, and some of the design for that as well.
Go on from here. Brian and I have known each other for twenty years, so I can say this, and he'll take it the right way, I prefer this as the engineer's requirement. Let me talk a little bit about, before I get into the specifics of the resolution, a little bit about how, since many of you are in council, you know how a municipality, a city borrows money, and they do it through what's called a bond, and it's nothing other than a promissory note, and it has to borrow money according to specific laws, there has to be a specific statute that allows you to borrow money. The advantage of the municipality borrowing money is they can borrow money more cheaply than you and I can. We go and take out a mortgage or buy a car, we have to pay interest on that, on that loan. The city does also, the city does also, but the interest that the city pays is lower, and the reason why it's lower is that whoever lends you the money doesn't have to pay income tax on that interest income that they earn, whereas where they lend you and I money, and we pay interest, they have to pay income tax on it. So a city can borrow, a city, a county, a township, or a village can borrow money more cheaply than can you and I, or the ordinary citizen. We've met a couple of times on this project to discuss how it might be done, and how we might be able to finance it. If you break the project down based on the estimates, of course, all we have is estimates at this point, to take bids, the sewer portion of this is in the neighborhood of two million seventy-nine thousand dollars, and the water portion of this is one million thirty-five thousand dollars. And the thought is, combine those together and borrow the money collectively together is one separate bond issue. The resolution that's before you uses a number of. uses a number not to exceed $2.5 million. The reason why we estimate high is obvious. We don't know bids at this point. And we haven't received bids at this point. The resolution does two things. One, it authorizes the publication of a notice of intent to issue the bonds. And you have to put in that notice of intent the maximum amount that you would borrow. The resolution, as a second purpose, states your intent to reimburse any cost that you incurred prior to the time that the bonds are issued from the proceeds of the bonds or the lending, the proceeds from the lending, to reimburse yourself those costs. You have to do that now in order to protect yourself from reimbursement later. All of this is governed by the Internal Revenue Service and lots of rules and regulations related to the Internal Revenue Service. We took a look at, just to kind of prepare you for this, we took a look at rates because obviously, any of these improvements would come from the revenues of the sewer system with respect to sewer system improvements and from the water system with respect to water system improvements. It looks like for sewer, there doesn't need to be any rate increases. And one of the primary reasons for that is the last bonds with respect to the sewer were just recently paid off. So the sewer has no outstanding debt at this point. And it looks to us, based on the numbers as we see them now, it won't require a sewer increase. Water's not quite so lucky. It looks like we're going to need, water still has a bond issue outstanding for a couple of years. And it looks like, while we don't know what that is, it looks like it will be necessary to increase water rates at some point in the future. That will come back to you specifically for your specific approval at that time. And in addition to that, after the notice of intent has been published, it must be published and must exist for 45 days. We'll come back to you, I'll come back to you and ask you to adopt the Bond Authorizing Resolution, which will have the specifics, the amount of money you're borrowing. At that time, you'll know whether or not there have to be rate increases at that time. So you'll actually be able to react to that and act with knowing that information. That's sort of some background information. Once you adopt, assuming you will adopt the resolution, then we'll arrange to get the notice, Susan will arrange to get the notice published in the ledger in the 45-day clock we'll be giving. We would anticipate, we met with the financial consultant advisor, we would anticipate, we're to work on a temporary schedule, closing on this bond issue and having funds available sometime in the middle of October, which sort of blends with Brian's plan as far as doing plans and specs and going off a bid on the project. The contractors, as we all know, are very busy now, so we're not really, you know, we're hopeful that we'll get good bids. Some of this work Brian might want to address can be done during the winter. It doesn't have to be done during the summer. So hopefully, we'll get good bids. And from a financing perspective, there seems to be good reason that we might want to go out and sell these bonds before the election. So no one, because no one seems to know what will happen after that election. And rates are very, very low right now. We're talking about a 25-year bond issue. We're talking about an average interest rate, probably under 2.5% based on today's rates. I can't guarantee six months, 60 days for them, but...
And as Dick mentioned, from a timing perspective, what we're looking at is the Valley Vista lift station design, the main lift station design, and the trunk sewer design are all currently underway. So the anticipation would be sometime in October that that construction can start. The good news is really all three of those are kind of off the roadway. The Valley Vista station would require a cut in the road, but the station itself is off the road. So again, that construction can start. What we really look at for those lift stations is that we can get concrete in the ground and the structure self-set before we have freezing weather. The rest of the work on, for instance, the lift stations is mechanical, electrical work piping, things that can be done in the colder weather. The main trunk sewer, which runs down past the fairgrounds area, again, since it's out of the street, we don't have to worry about putting a street back in wintertime. In essence, we can let that pipe crew go as long as the weather will allow them to go when it's not crazy freezing. There will be some de-watering down there, so that'll be kind of a liveter for us. But the other good news from that perspective, from a timing perspective on contractors is that often their underground crews are not very busy in October, November because they usually have to get done sooner in the year to get out of the way for the road rebuilding crews on utility projects. So we should be able to have some contracted capacity. That's our hope for later fall. So there's some advantage to having a trunk sewer that's not in the street. When we talk about the idea of the Broadway work and then further down Bowes, that would occur probably sometime next, starting in spring, if council is okay moving forward with those projects. So the timing-wise is those would occur next spring, summer, fall on the streets and then get put back as part of that.
And just adding to that, the other good news is part of the estimated cost during the reconstruction of the streets. So the city's going to get some new streets as part of itself.
And just to note too, that there's a, you know, obviously, that potential for Bowes Road and Broadway Street, all that work has a significant impact on King Milling's operations. So just to let council know, we've met with them several times. I mean, Rich, Rich has been there. Dave, we've had discussions with Dave as well. Talked with what their day-to-day operations are like, how their seasonal fluctuations affect things, you know, when they get, you know, that June, July, August period when the big harvest is on and they're really cranking every day. So we're working with them all the time on making sure that, you know, as we think through options, our design is being affected by how to accommodate some of their operations.
It's a challenge.
It is. You know, they run a lot of trucks out of there. And so, just so, we just wanted to let council know that, you know, it's a major industry in town. They're a major neighbor and part of the community. And they're absolutely being considered and they're an active part of this design process.
And a terrific taxpayer.
Yes. And they've been very good. We really appreciate their willingness to meet with us and discuss things and have, you know, go over some ideas. So it's been a pleasure working with them so far. And of course, with city staff. You guys have a great staff.
While the interest rate may be a good... Oh, Jim's house with a 505, more chapters in. While the interest rates may be low, I think we have one of the highest current water rates in the area. And if you were considering to raise the rate, would that rate then just be used to pay off the bond issue to the water? Or how would you guys think about appropriating that increase? And what would you be looking at paying off? Once you guys get to the area of making your decision. So I do have a concern about what that rate increase could be to that extent.
I'm sure everyone does. And we don't know that at this point until we have our cost. But the reason to raise the rates with respect to the borrowing would be directly related to the borrowing. Now, there may be other reasons to raise rates also because the costs go up in addition to, in addition to construction costs or new construction. The city has, I think I can mention, the city has a methodology that it employs to determine how rates are set. And the city is required by state law to have a system of rates and charges in which the cost of the system of running the system and the capital cost must be recovered to the rates and charges.
I think Sue could mention is that we utilize the Rural Water Association.
That's correct.
Or their methodology.
Mr. Mayor, I would make the motion that the city adopt Resolution 1716, expressing intent to issue bonds to finance various sewer and water projects not to exceed $3,500,000.
A second call.
Full call vote, please.
Councilmember DeMora's absent. Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
Mayor Althaus?
Something's ours. Do you have anything to ask?
Okay. For boards and commission reports? No, there, I... No, it's okay. So thank you.
Alan?
Well, the DEA, obviously, we were talking about Lara last week. And that still is coming to play at the... Is there going to be a special meeting for that?
I don't, I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
None has been established yet.
And the Planning Commission, with the help of Andy Moore, is putting together a commentary of a list of work for zoning. And he'll be with us in September's meeting. And the Planning Commission will address that. I would suggest people come and learn about what the Planning Commission does. Seems like we've had some turnover, so if you're interested in joining the Planning Commission, if we have any more openings, it's a great group of people, just like all of these boards. I've been so impressed with all of the boards. With that, I have nothing more.
I have nothing new, but the next Historic District Commission will be August 23 at 6 o'clock downstairs.
And I don't have anything new either. They canceled quite a few of my meetings, so... But I would like to say, to address Jim on that water, the city water. I should have spoke up a little bit sooner. I have tried to figure out for years why the city Lowell's water rates are so high. And actually, I know now. One of the reasons are, or is, we are such a small community. It costs just as much to produce water for 4,000 people than it does 6,000 people. We actually, we actually have to hope that the townships grow a little bit more and instead of drilling wells, they hook up to our water system. We actually should have been doing like, Plainfield Township's been doing for years. They, they've been promoting selling water. They sell water to everyone. And they're still promoting. And that's one of the reasons our rates are so high is costs go up, price of water goes up. And the residents Lowell and what little bit that we do sell to the township has to pay it. And so there's no, there's no real big reason except we're just a little bit too small. So, just to address that. Thank you. Sorry I got off to, but I just, if I didn't do it, I'd forget about it. So, City Managers report?
I read your comments.
No, there's no...
No, Perry's taking the Arbor ward position.
Yep.
Arbor ward will be in September.
Well, as was mentioned before, this is my last meeting as interim city manager. I will continue to serve in that position until Friday, September 2. Michael Burns will be starting as your new city manager on September 6. I will be here during the interim, during the Labor Day weekend, just in case of that, there would happen to be an emergency. Hopefully, nothing like that's going to happen. But you will be covered. I just wanted to say thank you. I thank you to this community. I thank you for people that are sitting out in the audience, who I know just about all of you and the council that really have made this community very special. I felt this way, I've been in this community. My wife, Ann, and I have lived here for 29 years. And we've enjoyed it. Our children went to school here. Ann worked in the Lowell Library for about 17 years, plus or minus. She probably knows more people than I do. I mean, it was just amazing. And she's been a strong supporter of this community. And I just really appreciate her counsel. And I'm glad that it worked out this way, that I had an opportunity to serve you. If you need my advice, you can receive it at any time. And if you want to. But the thing is, is that if you want to. And I just, again, just appreciate this. Staff is just terrific. We really have some good people here. And I tell you, I would say to many managers out, in and out in Michigan, they're NPO, they're envious of us. We have a terrific community. We've had some bumps along the way, as you well know. But boy, I'll tell you, you have really stepped up to the plate. Many of you have. And I just really appreciate that. I've appreciated, Dick, we're just trying to figure out how long we've known each other. I think it's 29 years. I remember him coming in when we had a bond issue coming for our secondary plant. I think that was the first time I met him. So anyway, just wanted to say thank you.